I'll call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call?
Trustee Stevens.
Here.
Trustee Myers.
Here.
Trustee Compton.
Here.
Trustee Landwehr.
Here.
Trustee Hudson.
Here.
Trustee Walshleger.
Here.
President Fannerstil.
Here. Tonight, our pledge of allegiance will be led by Boy Scout Derek Ludke.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, if we have any public comments or items that are not on the agenda, anybody that wants to speak publicly on anything that is not on the agenda. With it...
I have something to say. As a citizen of the village.
All right.
I stayed up past my bedtime this weekend to check out parking at Heartland. I've heard forever that we don't have any parking at Heartland. So Friday Night Fish Fry, which is a big, very popular thing, I checked out our parking areas. And only 50% of the parking lots were filled. And it's like, if we have a parking problem, how can there only be 50% that are still open? I looked at, behind Senior Tomas, it was like, there was hardly anything. Forty-three people there, out of the 87. I looked over at the Legion. Legion was full, they had a fish fry. Well, funny, because that's where the only sign that we have points to, is the Legion. I looked up at the, at the library. They had 20 people parked there. It can take 59 or 60. I looked over behind the old Dr. Seifert's office, Seifert's office there, there was 13 out of the 19. I think we have a real problem with our parking, is our failure to communicate, taking off of Palmer's. The, we don't have very good signage for where the parking is. I looked at that Goodman Road, and we got a sign that's about this big along, big, and if you're coming down there at the normal speed limit, and you don't have your headlights, you can't see that says "Parking," and it points down that way, down to the Legion. Well, the Legion was full. I went up to the BMW, or the BMO bank there, now where do I go? There's no signs that say "Parking this way" or "Parking that way." But I know that there was parking over by Senior Tomas behind them, and I went down there, and it was open, except where Palmer's, a number of people parked by the bridge. And those, there's like 10 or 15 places that were filled up, right there, that use the bridge that goes into Palmer's.
Those are workers.
They're all workers?
That, they're supposed to park on that side.
Oh, cool. So then we got more people that we can park there. This, across the street here, was almost empty. And there's one sign that points right by the crosswalk. Well, then I came back down the road, came from east and going, or come from west to east, and we got this great big yield sign for the sidewalk that blocks the parking area that goes down towards Legion. I think we need better signage then. I don't know, I just cannot believe that people say that there's no parking in Heartland, when on a Friday night, there's 50% of our parking spaces are available. I mean, Green Bay Packers don't have parking for everybody right up front. But you know, people find places to park. But I don't think we're telling them where they can park. There's a place across the road here, from the park, we advertise more that this is a crosswalk than we do that there's parking there. We got that little teeny sign, that's no bigger than this, that says "Park." We gotta lighten this thing up a little bit, brighten it up. And so that's my comment for today, is that we just aren't communicating our parking spots that are available, because people say, hey, there's no parking in Heartland. You're not gonna park right in front, you're gonna have to park around it. And there's a lot of parking spaces that are available, that 50% on Friday, and it was like 60% on Saturday. So it was, I think we got plenty of parking, it's a matter of telling people where the heck it is. I'm sure the police could confirm that none of these lots are full.
Thank you. Next item on the, are there any other, any other public comments? The next item on the agenda is a proclamation. And this is a proclamation in honor of Michael Bagan's 31 years of service to the village of Heartland upon his retirement. Whereas Police Chief Michael Bagan loyally served the village of Heartland residents for more than 31 years, having been hired as a police officer on August 18th, 1986. Whereas Michael Bagan served the village as a police officer, lieutenant, captain, deputy chief, and police chief with great skill as a key member of the leadership team during the department's growth into a high-quality Wisconsin law enforcement accreditation group accredited agency and a regional leader for coordinated law enforcement services. Whereas Michael Bagan's dedication to policing and to Heartland is demonstrated by his efforts to help start the Citizens Academy program and his efforts to learn and teach by attending the FBI National Academy, establishing the area police explorers post, and decades of teaching new police officers at the WCTC Police Academy. Whereas Michael Bagan, or Officer Mike, as he is sometimes known, walked his beat in Heartland to improve his knowledge and connection to the community, ensuring his place as an undeniable asset to our community, and while he will be missed, his retirement after 31 years of service is well-deserved. Now, therefore, the village board for the village of Heartland hereby proclaims congratulations and thanks to Michael Bagan upon his retirement, and encourages all residents to join in expressing our tremendous gratitude for his service. Thank you, Chief Bagan.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I do have a few comments.
Oh, absolutely.
Sure.
What I did was I actually wrote them, because at risk of talking for a good half hour or so, if I just talked off the cuff. So tonight, I reflect briefly on 31 and a half years. I was 19-years-old the day that I came into Heartland to look for the police department to get an application. Police officers sometimes are a bit stubborn, and I have that same streak to some degree, you could ask my wife, who's with us tonight. But I had no clue where the police department was. So I stopped at what was Heartland Standard, just down the road here, now BP, and bought a map, because I didn't want to ask the clerk. So I buy this map, I find out that I'm a block and a half away, and I come down to the police department. I get my application. Some months later, I'm in this very room, at age 20, to do an interview. And totally thinking, there's no way, I'm way too young. And a couple days later, I get a call from Chief Hetznecker, and he's offering me a job. So on August 18th, 1986, I began a career here in Heartland. I'm proud to tell you that the goals that I set in that interview, when they asked me, are goals that I was able to accomplish during my career, and many more. Some of you recall the old show Wide World of Sports, and in its opening line, it said, "The thrill of victory and the agony defeat." And you can, some of you remember the pictures that go along with that. This is what policing's all about. The thrill of victory for me was represented in carrying an elderly woman out of a burning building, catching burglars in the act, finding a runaway who thanked me years later for getting her life on track, stopping destructive acts, and many more. The agony defeat was represented in a few squad accidents, a burglar getting away moments before I arrived on scene, accidentally falling through someone's screen door, and falling on ice and breaking a few ribs. And there are countless many stories that I or any police officer could tell about their career. There's seminars all over this country that teach what we do. They call it community-based policing, where big city police departments try to get their police officers to do what the Heartland police officers do every day, and that is police in a small town. Here, it's a natural way of policing for us, where we interact with the community in a problem-solving way to try to make this a better place. I've seen many changes over the years. When I started, Dick Landwehr was on the board. The population, the landmass, the police department, were all substantially smaller, about half of what they are today. Many more people now, so much more land, and Dick Landwehr is still on the board. So I look forward to perhaps one day coming back from my son's retirement, and perhaps seeing Dick again. But we'll see.
I lived your whole life, but I'm not yet though.
Okay. So the day I came to work, I had the same excitement that I did on August 18th, when I first started so many years ago. I have no doubt that in the days to follow, the few days that there are, I will enjoy it as much, coming into work. I would like to thank each of you for your support of the police department over the years, particularly the last year, when I'd been the chief and interacted with you much more. Tonight, I report to you that the men and women of the Heartland Police Department are working effectively to keep this community safe and keep it a great community. Your department's in good order. I received an email today by a website called Safe Wise, which is an independent review and comparison website, and they ranked Heartland as the sixth safest community in the state of Wisconsin. By comparison, the top five were all had populations of 3,900 to 6,800 people, substantially less than our population reported at 9,200-plus. So I think that's a credit to not only the policies, the decisions, the way the village board handles this, but the men and women of the Heartland Police Department as well, and all citizens in this community. So I thank you as you carry out your work. I wish you all well. I hope that you keep this community as great as it has been the last 31 and a half years. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mike, when are we celebrating your retirement? In an open house?
Wednesday, Wednesday night, 4:30 is an open house at Heartland Elementary North, and everyone's invited.
Mike, when are we celebrating your retirement? In an open house?
Wednesday, Wednesday night, 4:30 is an open house at Heartland Elementary North, and everyone's invited.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is not as exciting as the one that we just went through. We have a consideration of a motion to approve village board minutes from the February 12th, 2018 meeting.
I'll submit.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain.
That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to approve the vouchers for payments in the amount of $154,738.
I move we pay the bills for $154,738,000.
Second. It's been moved and seconded.
Question.
Did we get a second? It's been moved and seconded. Go ahead for question.
Fire department, lesbian fire department, January, February classes, are we going to another fire department to get training how we run our fire department, or is that just a normal class?
Are you looking at Lisbonville for CPR cards?
$870.
Correct. We work through Milwaukee County American Heart Association, and they are our training hub, so all the CPR cards that we do, that means, it's a good thing, that means we've trained over 1,800 people in CPR. And those, that money gets reimbursed to the village when the people get their cards, or when we charge them for training them.
So we went there to train them how to do that?
No, sir. They came to Heartland to train, and we trained them in CPR, AED, and first aid. And we buy our cards through Lisbon, because they are our training hub. We are all part of a consortium, but they're the main training hub. So they pay for the cards up front, and then we reimburse them for the cards. And the money for the cards gets reimbursed from the person that took the class.
So that $870 will come back to us?
Correct.
For the training?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Next, we have items referred from the February 19th, 2018 Plan Commission meeting, consideration of a motion to approve site building landscaping and lighting plans for construction of the warehouse for MWS Warehouse at 400 Cardinal Lane.
Representatives are here in the audience, if you need to ask questions, but otherwise, the Plan Commission reviewed this, and we're talking about a, what right now will serve as an expansion to the existing facility that's, or to the existing business that's just to the west of this property. So the two businesses will be connected, that's why the parking facilities for this aren't being as installed as robust as they would be if it were a standalone business. So for the time being, it'll be part of the existing business on the properties, but it's being set up so that if, in the future, it doesn't need to be, or they decide they can sell it off, it's available for them.
I'm moving to approve that MWS Warehouse expansion.
Second.
I got a question then.
It's been moved and seconded.
On these catch basins, is that that new thing that goes in the ground, that the water absorbs? You know, we talked about it for years. I was just kinda interested in that when I saw that.
Are you talking about the erosion control portion?
Is that what that is?
Yes, it's a basket.
That isn't, yeah. That isn't what we talked about, that they were gonna put in streets and everything else that, to keep the stormwater and the other water.
No, what this does is, when there's a construction project going on, the basket traps the solids coming off of the road, and it doesn't clog the grate up, so when a snow, a wind, rainstorm, excuse me, the rainwater can still go into the catch basin and not build up in the street.
No, I knew of that, but I was thinking about, remember we talked about that new, that when you put in the road, you put curb and gutter, and instead of water running out, it seeps in? That isn't what this is.
No.
This is just, yeah, okay.
Trustee Walshleger.
Excuse me. I just wanted to confirm and get clarified, that the easement, or is it permanent, the roadway that is being used to get to 480 Cardinal Lane is still gonna be there? The garage that's for sale, the two-story garage that's for sale on the corner of Cardinal and whatever that street is, is for sale right? It's been for sale for a while? And the only way to access that is from the back parking lot? We're talking about Rappco, right?
Right.
Yeah. That parking lot, you have to go through to get to the back part of that garage?
But we're talking across the street.
Yeah. Okay.
At the Lake Country, old newspaper.
Because I looked at, yeah, that's right.
Well, there's nothing back there, except the Piggly Wiggly is on the right and the rap.
Well, but you know that property that's on the corner, that's for sale? Looks like a house on the front?
You mean over on the other side of Sullivan Metals?
Pardon me?
Over at the other side of Sullivan Metals, at the corner of Cardinal and Norton?
It's at the corner, you go 440, then there's 460, and then there's 480. That's what I was describing around today. It's got the two brick pillars in front of it, and a short driveway to the front. But the only way to get to the back of this building, where you would access it, if you were to buy it and say want to store trucks or anything, that's the only way to get anything in there. Because the land to the west of that building, at 480, it's swamped right in there. So you couldn't put a road back there. So their access has to go through Rappco's parking lot.
There is no access from Rappco parking lot. I'm very familiar with it.
Well, with what used to be the paper place.
Right, there is absolutely no access from the back of that lot.
To the south? If you go in, heading westward to the south?
No.
That's the only way to get in, is the way it is right now.
I've snowplowed that, there's no drive back there.
Then how do they get to the back of the building?
About their building, just go around the corner.
You can't.
So I suppose the short answer is, nothing is changing on the existing Rappco property.
Okay.
There is only change being made to the property east of the existing Rappco facility.
Okay.
If in fact, there is an easement or some access that way through the parking lot, it was not a discussion that during the, that anything was changing related to it.
Because we, I, we had looked at the property, and that's why I was wondering.
Any other comments? No? Anybody else on this, on this item? So we have a, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item on the agenda are items related to an amendment to the zoning code to create the RSE 2 Single Family Residential Estate District. The first item of those are consideration of the first reading of Bill, or an ordinance number 22618-01, an ordinance to amend Chapter 46 of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code pertaining to zoning ordinance.
So the ordinance that you have in front of you is, has been reviewed and recommended by the Plan Commission, with two exceptions. After the Plan Commission was finished with their review and had forwarded it onto the village board, I had some additional conversations with the landowner that's bringing this matter forward, and with the building and zoning official to try and, and deal with some concerns that the resident, or that the landowner is coming up with. The one change that I would recommend to the village board for you to consider is found on line 65 of the ordinance, and that is simply a change to remove the word "and" and write it, and exchange it for the word "or," which then provides some flexibility to how the onsite septic and onsite utility work will be represented as part of a CSM process, either on the CSM or by a separate attachment. The other item that I would reference to you comes in essentially in lines 95 through 98, where there is a concern about access. And it makes some sense, because the county, this is a county highway that we're talking about, and frequently with parcels that may be similarly situated to this one, we would be talking about county highways, where the county controls access to the private properties. And in this instance, the county has indicated that it will not allow three driveways, it will allow less than that, perhaps as few as one, to what may ultimately become three parcels. So we've added a provision here that specifically allows, in this district, that three, that multiple driveways can be, or rather, multiple parcels can be accessed from one driveway, and that that would be part of any represented CSM. An easement would have to be provided. And the reason we're putting it in here is because that's not allowed in any other district in the village. So shared driveways aren't allowed in the, in Heartland, but we may want to allow them in this position. So I've put it in as recommended language to make it permissive for the village to allow that in cases where it makes sense.
Because it's a county road.
Because in this instance, it's a county road, and they won't be able to get three access points, they may get as few as one. And so there would need to be some sort of an easement arrangement among those property owners.
And there's sort of be a kind of a, you can call it a frontage road for the other two.
There would be of some sort, yep.
So that takes care by the, there's an agreement between the three houses?
Right.
That they gotta take care of.
And what this provision would allow for, because this just sets up the zoning for what will ultimately be a land division. And what this allows for is that, without having to go through the formal variation process, which is, as you know, has a very high bar, we have made a provision that the Plan Commission can recommend to the village board, and the village board can authorize an easement for a shared driveway in this district. So it's a bit of a workaround for what's becoming, what's sort of a strange situation out there. Anyway, otherwise, it's been recommended for approval by the Plan Commission after some final changes that they made with respect to street frontage and side yard setbacks.
Now, you wanna go to the second reading on it?
You have to go to a, you'll have to set a public hearing on this for the 26th?
Okay.
About a month from now?
That's coming up, okay.
Yep. So you, tonight, I just wanted to point those things out for you, there's no other action to take on the ordinance specifically, other than we've asked you to set that hearing for the 26th of March.
No, is it the 26th? I thought that was for the Highway K thing that you...
You're gonna do two public hearings tonight.
Okay, okay. I'll pack the lunch.
Yep.
I just wanted to straighten that out, I thought we had that still.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Different publication times, so we needed a little bit more access for that other one.
Yeah, I can understand.
A motion would be entertained for...
I move that we set the public hearing for March 26th, board meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Are we gonna set a time on that, so that the two don't come in? You know, so if somebody's interested in coming to the public hearing for those three, are we gonna say, well, that'll be at 7:00, and the other one will be at 8:00? Or the other second hearing will come after the first one's done?
We just said it, that it's at that board meeting. We didn't set a time because of the, we don't know 100%.
What I was saying, you know, somebody, sometimes he's going a little longer than the other one. Well, that's okay. That's what it's gonna be there, it's gonna come down.
Right. If that's what the board wants, but it's been...
No, 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 I just wanna know.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
That public hearing is set, that's carried.
Okay, thank you.
The next item on the agenda are items related to requests for amendment to comprehensive plan, comprehensive land use plan for the area north of County Highway K, Lisbon Road, and west of Winkleman Road. Our first item is open for discussion, consideration of the first reading of the bill for an ordinance number 22618-02, an ordinance to adopting an amendment to the Village of Heartland Comprehensive Development Plan 2035.
So the Plan Commission has reviewed this matter officially, the amendment to the comprehensive plan, at two meetings, January and February. Prior to that, they reviewed in concept the development that is causing the discussion. At the meeting on the 19th of February, the Plan Commission did adopt a resolution recommending the approval to the, to the village board, with a variety of comments included. So we have drafted, that is, staff has drafted an ordinance for the village board to consider that is written in the language to adopt the change as well. You will want to consider that as you move through this reading and the second reading, and then again, as the, as the public hearing comes up, any changes that you may want to make to that ordinance, or any commentary that you want to put in there, if you decide to go ahead and move forward with the amendment. One of the things I did mention in my memo to you, and is kind of referenced in the ordinance at this point, is that we've asked the developer to prepare some neighborhood plans for that part of the village, not only the neighborhood that he's contemplating developing, but also the neighborhoods surrounding that. Those of you that have recently looked at the comp plan will remember that there are neighborhood plans in our comprehensive plan, both for areas that we've actually assigned designated land uses to, as well as areas that are outside the, or the limits of what we were planning for. So the Plan Commission did talk about them, ended up not deciding to put them as part of their resolution to the village board, but staff is recommending that the village at least look at those before moving on with any decisions, so.
So we're gonna have the first reading tonight, and then the second reading, and then the third reading after the hearing? Would that be proper?
Yep. I think that would be the intent. You would be moving towards, it would be so that you could, if you wanted and were ready, adopt a motion or adopt that resolution after the hearing. If you wanted time, you certainly could take it.
Well, yeah, that's what I would figure would be the best thing to go all three deals with it, you know?
Sure.
I just have a question on the, so if we do have a concern or a question, or some information, we should wait until the public hearing? If we make the motion tonight, all we're doing is moving it through to the second, we're not approving it?
No, there's no approval tonight. If you...
Tonight is just the reading.
The reading of it.
Due to the fact that there has to be three of them, it just so happens that the third reading and the public hearing are gonna fall on the same date.
Would it be possible to get one of these that has the acreage? When I'm going through all my calculations, it's very hard to come up with the 17 acres up here versus how many acres are here, how many acres are over here, and how much the road takes up? Do we have a map that has all those details on it?
We do.
Could I get a copy of that, please?
There's one roaming around, and I saw it someplace myself.
Well, what I'm looking for is not in what we got.
Now, with that plan that, that comes up as, will the county road that someday, 10, 15 years ago from now, is gonna come through that property, is it, are we concerned with that aspect of the property developed with that line, or that road, invisible road going to be in? Does it have to be in that plan? Are we concerned?
Does it have to be in that plan, are we concerned with that?
That, that's part of, that's part of what we're doing here, and that's part of changing the comprehensive plan, that for years, that road was shown to be going, coming south of Highway K, and then joining up with, with Young Bluff Road. Now, people are gonna go all the way up Young Bluff until where it tees, and that road in the future someday will, you will continue past that intersection, and it will wind and then connect with Winkleman Road.
So...
And that's part of the hearing.
So, it is the part that that road, that invisible road will be into the development?
Yeah, we're, we're kinda doing two things, there's one is, we're, in this, like I said, in talking with the Plan Commission, there's, there's two things, and at the Plan Commission, we talked about it, but one is, and in a sense, they're separate, but one is changing the comprehensive plan to show the road going to the north, because it, it has been pretty much mandated that that's where it has to go. I heard Heartland's been working on it to go to the south for ten years, we thought it was a better plan, but it sounds like it's gotta go to the north. That's one part of it, and the other one is the density change, because right now, our comprehensive plan doesn't allow for the density that would be part of this project, and that's what, you know, we'll end up having to decide. So, there's kinda two aspects of it.
So, the road will be in the plan?
Mm-hmm.
It will be there, and it'll be like burmed or something, all the way?
When you say in the plan, you're meaning any final development plan for the project for up there? Yes, it would. The Plan Commission...
But that doesn't really have anything to do with this, or does it?
Not at this point, no.
Not at this point, this, that's...
If in fact, the village decides to, as you sort of put it, acquiesce to the county, and include as part of our plan that the county route would go to the north at some point in the future, as part of any development activity on the forty acres that includes that road, the Plan Commission and the developer will have to work out how they're gonna buffer that eventual road.
So, it will be there, I don't want to have something set up, and all of a sudden, oh, the road's not gonna work here because we got houses there.
No, we would, we would have to take that into consideration.
On top of what Mike is saying, how can we go forward with this until the county actually has that in black and white, exactly where that road is, where it's gonna enter, where it's going to come out on Winkleman, cutbacks on Winkleman as far as all the curviness and the hills, until that is actually set in black and white, how can we even process this?
The county does have that set in black and white.
Yeah.
They do have the preliminary designs of that.
The exact location.
They do.
That, so it's not going to defer from exactly where it is on here?
No, once, especially once we have a right of way dedicated or a space dedicated for it, and that's all predicated on, or the design is all predicated on the versions of that roadway that the county has shared.
And the second question I had was, how can we change the comprehensive, or the zoning on a piece of property that's not even in the village yet?
We're not changing the zoning on anything.
Or the, the density?
Land use designation?
Yes.
The land use designation is, I'll lay back up and say, the village is authorized, as a municipality in the state of Wisconsin, to plan for, and in fact, has certain plat approval authority within a mile and a half of its corporate limits. So, a mile and a half to the north until we leave the county, or a mile and a half or equidistant to the, the Village of Merton, the village has authority in that space, because it's, the concept under state law is that eventually that'll be part of that municipality. And so, that municipality has authority within that distance.
Over the town?
Well, yes, as a matter of fact. Like I said, we have plat approval authority, so if the town is doing a, is doing a subdivision, for example, north of the Mary Hill subdivision, there is a subdivision in the town, Mary Hill, when that was being considered and approved, the Village of Heartland had plat approval authority there, and exercised that authority and allowed that to take place.
Oh.
And so, if you look at our comprehensive plan, you'll see that the, the north forty property, as we refer to it, or the property owned by the Young Bluff family, adjacent to Highway K, is already included in our comprehensive plan and has a land use designation to it.
Over the years, we've done extraterritorial approval for a lot of developments outside of our boundaries that are within that, that area.
How far does a mile and a half go in that direction? You're talking about from this point here, correct?
No, the border.
From the boundary of the village.
Oh.
Yeah, so from the boundary of the village, wherever it is and as it moves, we have a mile and a half authority.
Seeing as Karen says, we, we've done that, how many times, ten times or something?
In the fifty years since I've been here.
Countless times.
And, and basically, what they're doing is being polite, is asking you for recommendations. They don't have to do what we recommend to do.
Well, the village actually does have pretty powerful authority when it comes to plat approval.
Cause I can remember just once, we, we didn't agree with what they did, and it went through anyhow because it...
Municipalities have very strong authority there, depending on the size of the municipality. For example, cities of the first through third class have three-mile radius, so, but, and that's a pretty absolute authority, different than zoning authority, which we can also exercise, but that's more in partnership with the town. But plat approval authority is a very absolute authority.
So, we do not have a, well, I suppose we don't need a motion considering it is just the reading, but it is, it is okay that we're discussing, but just so everybody's aware, so everybody knows, I mean, obviously, it's law that we have to have these three readings, unless we, you know, go outside of our own laws. This is the first reading, but this is what will, this is what we will have to decide, just so everybody knows, when it comes to March twenty-sixth or later, depending on what the board decides, this is what we will be deciding.
And certainly, if there are questions the Village Board has, whether it's, you know, as simple as needing additional information, or, you know, I think it's appropriate that if there's any conversation you wanna have when this comes up on the agenda, you certainly can have it. Ultimately, my intent would be that if you, if you want to shape or somehow otherwise craft that ordinance, that we can move through that.
And it should come up, if there is questions, I think, it should come up by the second reading, cause you don't wanna come here and have a hearing for the third reading, and then all of a sudden, we postpone it, because, I don't think, cause we've been working on that thing for five years now, or six or seven, that piece of...
As it relates to the road.
Well, you could, or you should.
Yeah.
Because that's why you have a public hearing.
Well, that's the proof.
But I mean, you don't wanna...
If you have questions about it.
It should come before the public hearing, then the people that come.
It'd be good to get the questions out of the way beforehand.
And what you wanna, what you wanna adopt.
And I guess the public could come and ask questions, or can contact the village as well, if they have questions about that or anything that they've read, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
So, so, we've done our discussion, unless anybody has anything else that they wanna add, and we've done our reading and explanation on what that reading was. And just, I'm gonna remind, mainly for people watching and the people here, the board knows, but there is a public hearing on this on March twenty-sixth that has been set.
Did we move that?
Yes, last meeting.
Last meeting.
Last meeting, just for clarification with that being asked, last meeting, we set the public hearing for March twenty-sixth, based on the guidance, we, we, we had foresight based on the guidance of what would come out of the comprehensive, or the Planning Commission, and that is what came out of the Plan Commission, that meeting has already been set, so therefore, we don't have to set a public hearing tonight, because it has already been set for March twenty-sixth.
And advertised over the weekend.
And advertised over the weekend. Okay. Next item on the agenda, consideration of a motion to approve a professional service agreement with SRF Consulting Group, Inc. of Madison for comprehensive plan and comprehensive outdoor recreation plan update service in the not to exceed amount of forty-five thousand nine hundred seventy dollars, including a ten percent contingency.
So, as you're all aware, the village took proposals for the services that President Fanner still mentioned, that is, updating the village's comprehensive plan, which was adopted in two thousand nine, and is due for a good thorough review and an update as Additionally, the, the comprehensive outdoor recreation program, which is updated about every five years, does a couple of things for us. One, it is sort of an implementation document related to the comprehensive plan, it also helps keep the village eligible for grants through the DNR. Anyway, regardless, those two pieces of information, two planning documents of the village are scheduled for update in the upcoming several months, and to get there, we, as I said, sought proposals from the firms in the public. We received six proposals, they were reviewed by a committee, you'll remember, Trustee Walshleger was appointed to that committee, two members of the staff, myself and the Public Works Director, who manages the parks aspect, and a member of the Plan Commission, and a member of the Park Board, were all involved in reviewing those proposals. Ultimately, the committee decided to interview three of the firms that had submitted to us, spent an afternoon interviewing those three firms, and ultimately, in a unanimous fashion, decided that SRF Consulting was the best fit for us. That means not only did they have a high-quality proposal that addressed our needs, and we thought addressed in a unique way, a method for moving the village through those two processes, but also, when we met with the staff, there was a connection and an understanding, and so, this was really done as a true professional services agreement. The commission didn't know, or the committee, rather, didn't know what the prices were until the very end, until we had met, we had talked and discussed and, and ranked the professional organizations, and we were pretty happy when we opened it up, and we only opened the one, we opened it up, and the, the numbers were right in the, in the ballpark of what the village had anticipated spending. I met then via telephone with Paul from SRF, who is here, and can certainly answer questions or make a comment, and maybe I'll ask him to come up maybe and tell you a little bit about the firm, just so you hear his voice, so to speak. But nonetheless, I spent, I met via phone with them, talked a bit about the process, made sure that everything was covered, and we have agreed on a, on a pricing schedule, round numbers, about forty thousand dollars for the primary services, plus about four or five thousand dollars in contingency services. And really, that's intended to provide us with a buffer that if we find that we want them to come in and do a little bit more, whether it's pop-up events, as you know what that is, Trustee Walshleger, these are the events that they're going to use to try and solicit information from the public about the future of, of Heartland, but if we wanted to add some of those, or we found that there was additional surveying we wanted to do, or, or other meetings we wanted them to have, that we have a nut of money there, that we don't have to get the whole Village Board together to approve adding a little bit of time.
Now, this will go until something really drastic happens to the area, right? I mean, when did we do this last, that's been fifteen years?
The last approval was two thousand nine, and that had a twenty thirty-five life on it. I suspect we'll change the date to maybe around twenty forty-five or twenty fifty, when we do an update.
Well, that's what I, I figured.
So, I don't know if something dramatic will happen in that timeframe, but...
I can't see it unless you...
What, all this company is going to do is, and it's my understanding, and it's good cause that it comes up, they're gonna be relooking at the comprehensive plan, if there's tweaks and changes and things like that, I know, if you have something to say, go ahead, I just wanna make sure everybody understands what it is.
Yeah, but I was just saying, would we ask them if there's something that would come up, now, how many years have we got this far?
Well, the comprehensive planning service is about eleven, twelve-month process, so we expect to be done with the update in a, in about that timeframe. One of the other pieces of this, although we didn't evaluate this, and we don't have a pricing for it, one of the other pieces of this was to, and I refer to it as get a planner in the stable, to, to develop a relationship with a planning firm, a third-party planning firm, that we can use when the big things come up, or when we need a little bit more planning assistance, we can call on that firm, because they've got a good history with us, they've got a good connection with us, and can come in and do that work with us.
No, and I, I'm full in agreement, and it's a good idea, but I was just kinda curious as to fact, so that, they're through, basically, they're through in a year or twelve months, and then if something were to come up, we could either get them back, or if something else changes, you should go through this process again.
Right.
I mean, I don't, it's first...
Absolutely.
I would like to add to that also, so that the public knows and the residents, it's my understanding that we are, it's not going to be just the employees of this firm, or just, you know, the village employees, that we are also gonna ask residents to volunteer to be on a group that is going to work and work on this with the company. So, any residents who are interested need to submit their paperwork, I guess, to Dave or Jeff.
Yep, right.
And we'd like some residents to get in there and voice their, where they wanna see Heartland in twenty years, thirty years. I think you're looking for a total of twelve on that committee?
Yeah, we are flexible in our approach, but we did recommend communities to this size be right around that eight to twelve. I think in the proposal, we put ten to twelve for Heartland, thinking that would be a good cross-section of business owners, village staff, just residents of all different makeups, ages, ethnicities, everything like that, so, we are flexible in our approach, and kind of do also, we've, we've run as high as twelve, as low as seven or so. That seems to be a pretty good number, and obviously, we'd be looking for, for, for your...
Input?
Input on that as well, right?
Yep, we'll work on that. Paul Schellebold, go ahead and...
Yeah, thanks, Dave, and you did a great job, basically taking away everything I was gonna say, but, um...
Sorry.
My name is Paul Schellebold, I'm the proposed project manager on this one. I'm a sixteen-year planner out of our Madison office, I represent SRF Consulting Group, which is a engineering, planning, architecture firm of about three hundred and twenty employees. We have umbrellas under each of those areas as well, so we can get into detailed traffic, we can get into site plans, things like that when needed. Yeah, the big, the big thing for us is, we, we, we are anticipating a big part of community engagement, so, community surveys, pop-up events, the traditional open houses, as a way to make Heartland have the vision come through for you, and rightsizing that project for you guys, and what's important, understanding that that changes over time, so, we wanted to right-size that and put the right group together for, for this project.
Okay. One of the things I will mention, just as we're, as we're moving towards hopefully a, a motion to approve, one of the things that I think that I certainly felt was critical, and I think that the committee shared that feeling, was to take what, the comprehensive planning document that we have today, which I refer to as a fairly text-heavy document, and turn it into something that's a little bit easier for people to use, a little bit easier for people to comprehend, and, and actually be a part of, so to speak, the, the planning activities of the village. So, we're anticipating a, a much different-looking document that is a little bit more lively and more interesting to look at and more easily used, so, I think that was one of the reasons that we ended up selecting your firm as well.
You mean, somebody might actually read?
Well, more than staff has, yeah.
And making it useful for your residents, too.
And that's really the key there.
Opening up the plan, you know, the, the future land use plan, all your residents who open it up in different forms of media can understand what their rights are as landowners, and ask the questions, you know, to the village staff, and understand, you know, how they're, what they can do with their property, or things like that, so it's, it is very important.
I'll make a motion that we approve SRF Consulting Group.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Next item on the agenda is discussion and possible consideration of actions related to a resident request for dog waste stations in the village.
We got plenty of dog waste, we don't need it.
This one came up, there was a resident that, well, a resident made a complaint that there's dogs that aren't, that are doing what they're supposed to do, but owners that aren't doing what they are supposed to do while they're walking with their dog. So, we had some emails that went back and forth with the residents, I think every trustee, I think, got an, got an email from that resident, but some of us responded, and it's something that kinda requested, not kinda, requested be on the agenda so that we can talk about it as a board, on whether we, you know, wanna look into that and see if there is an issue there, sometimes we run into where these are on our own ice age trail, but those may fall inside of certain parameters, whether it's in the city, in our parks, or in someone's HOA, you know, if anybody has anything that they want to...
I have the last sidewalk on East Capitol, and I had the same problem, people walk their dogs out there and consider that the dumping spot, and every time I cut grass up there... And every time I cut grass up there, I've got to power wash my tractor tires and the undercarriage because it's covered with dog doo-doo.
Okay.
I put signs out there, please, if your dog drops it, please pick it up. And I find them in the woods. They pull them up and throw them in the woods. I did contact the police, and they did come out and more or less watch that area. They didn't sit there, but they, you know, they did, and I guess they wrote some tickets, and it got better for a while, but it's back to the same thing. Trouble is, is if they can't carry their own plastic bag and take it home with the garbage, what's going to make them get one of ours and throw it in the garbage?
Right.
In the waste can there?
Mm-hmm. Right.
Somewhere along the line, we got to educate, because I feel the same way. We've got a lot of people walking past White House in the corner there with dogs, some people I know, some people I don't, and they pick it up. And basically, I walk, I cut my, I get my grass cut once a week, and I walk through there, and I'll bet you in two months, if there's some dog doo-doo, I take the shovel and I throw it in the garden. I don't need a $500 doggy doo-doo box in front of my house. That's my opinion of it, Steve.
I did, as you all got copies of, a bunch of research, and I have been working on this, actually, for a week now. And I did find where we can get a dog waste station at a discounted price of $200 each. It includes the sign, the post, it includes the bags that you would actually, if you don't have your own, you can get the dog waste bags. And the one that I chose had a, the container where you can put your bag of dog poop in, and then that would get emptied at a later time, so you don't have to carry it around. And the reason I think the one I did is, when my son was in college down in Florida, he was in an all-student apartment complex. They had the same exact units, and they, with college students, they had not one problem with dog messes not being picked up. It was amazing. And I know that we have issues with people carrying it, and then they'll turn a corner and they'll throw it on the ground, thinking, well, I'm on another street, doesn't matter now. Well, but I, I would like to look at this some more. I'd like to look at some fundraising, some pricing, and I did look at the parks and how many acres we have, and the dog fees, and the complaints from all the citizens, and just to make sure that we get the installation, I think, on the village property, not, I don't, I don't feel we need to start putting it in any of the homeowners' association land, because I think that's opening up a whole can of worms that we don't want to get into. But, you know, maybe we could try one at Nixon Park, because we're going to be opening the beer garden pretty soon, we've got the bands playing there, and all the baseball games and everything that go on. Maybe we could put one there and see if that, how that works. I don't, I'm just throwing that out there.
Right.
Then you should turn that over to the park board, but, and I walk through Nixon Park, well, not lately, because I had my backup for it, but at least three times a week, either to the post office or that. And when I see people walking their dog, they pick it up and throw it in a container that's in the park. And I don't know whether that's true. When I read this thing, it was $200 for a flag and $200 for the, but you're getting both for 200 bucks?
You get the entire, the whole thing. The sign, the bag dispenser, the post, and the garbage box that's on the bottom.
And then who has these?
Well, that would have to all be worked out. There's some other things, too, that would have to be looked at.
That's what I say, we should study this.
I think that it's something that we do, we can look into it. We had resident complaint, and we can, we can look into it and study it, including going even to the parks board and maybe even the Ecos Committee if it goes out that far. But talk to the proper people and see if this is something we should be looking at. Does it make a difference? Does it keep our community cleaner? But I think we really, I think there's a lot of questions that still need to be.
And how many do we want, and where do you want to put them?
We also have to be careful with the DNR, too, with the water, don't we?
Well, we don't want a lot of, I mean, we don't want big mounds of, or areas where a bunch of dogs go and it's not being picked up.
We have this upstairs, actually, in the front area. I did not know this was up there, and it's, excuse me, did you drop something? And it shows actually number of dogs and how many pounds of waste per day and the bacteria in it. I had no idea. Did you know we had those up there?
I didn't know they were up there, but I know that it does, it's not good for the water if it, you know, if there's a lot of waste from dogs.
I was amazed it was up there. So if, if we want to go further with it, I would be glad to do some more work on it if the board is not interested at all and just want to let it go, and I...
Well, why not? How about look into it a little bit more and go to the park board, and maybe even, you know, some of the questions we got to answer. Do we need, you know, the regular garbage cans with more signage? Do we need an actual station? And do we need to figure out what the, you know, see what the, you know, based on the information, you know, what would those costs involve, how would be, work it? Is there a real need that you notice? You know, things like that. I don't have a dog, so I don't notice it a ton, but I can understand where it would be irritating to people if there's a lot of this going on.
Oh, there is. I mean, I have two dogs. I know it, but as far as like the funds, I did some work on funds and how to pay for them, that I would need to take to the parks board and, you know. But I just came up with different ideas how to raise the funds. The only thing I couldn't figure out was how we're going to empty it, because that would go to Mr. Mike.
Yeah, to the deep need of...
You can't hide.
And then you got to replace the bag.
I'm laughing because I'm overhearing what's being sent back by my eyes.
And I went with a solid one, so it doesn't turn into what they call poop soup.
Yeah, I guess my concern is the park. I mean, the park, I didn't realize that there was a big problem in our parks.
There isn't one.
I don't think the problem is in the park. I think it's in the walkways, like the, the trail that goes through the town and out we get, that's where the people are, not, I don't think the park is a problem. I think that, so other, the walkways that we have is the problem. And when you get to those other walkways, it's like, okay, do you put it at the front of the walkway, or you put it in the middle, do you put it at the end? I mean, it's like, I, I don't know that, but it's, it's the walkways, not the parks. And I'm talking to the park board, I don't know what good that's going to do, because I don't think that's a problem. I think the problem is on the, on the walkways.
I think you're right, because there's no residential people there, so nobody bothers picking it up, if you educate them. I was going to go over there when the weather got a little bit, just look at that, that area, because I don't have a problem.
I called a few residents, and they said it's bad. I will admit, I haven't been able to look at it thoroughly.
Well, and you got Rick. He's got a bad problem up on that corner, because he's got the woods right there and there's no house. Your house is too far away, and that kind of thing.
Right.
And that's the problem there is. And then where would you put them? I mean, most people, if they, if you put one at the beginning of the block, and the dog goes googoo up the street, they're going to walk back with that.
Well, the question I still have is, I don't think that the park board is the, is their, the question is, I think that it's outside, and I don't know how we go outside. Who's in charge of all our walkways? Is that the park board?
Like, what, the path that goes between Centennial Park to downtown? Who monitors that? Is that...
That's a, I mean, that's an extension of the parks.
Okay, is that also the Ice Age Trail?
It's also the Ice Age Trail, so the Ice Age Trail Community Committee is certainly interested in it.
I, I just...
And that's where I think we should probably be spending it.
All I'm suggesting is look into it a little more, you know, if you ought to head it up and look into it a little more, we can have some answers, including maybe we find we don't need them, or maybe we find, oh my gosh, this is, we really need them, or maybe it's, we just need signs with more cans to throw stuff in.
Tell people what the fine is going to be.
Stuff, things like that.
How we raise the funds.
Yep, yep.
Well, and then figure out how many we want, so that when it comes up and where we would put them, you know, basically.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because I don't think I need one in.
You don't want one in your yard?
No way. In fact, if the village wants to spend $200, I'll put a crack up there. If they give me 200 bucks, I'll empty it every week.
I think the problem is really going to be wherever people can't be seen.
That's what it seems like.
These are people who are just not polite or considerate when they walk their pets.
Right.
And if they figure no one's looking, they're going to let their dog do its thing and walk away.
Yep.
And I don't care if that thing is right next to the dog. I doubt if they'll even pick a plastic bag out of the thing, pick it up and put it in the container. As long as nobody's watching them, these are just inconsiderate people.
And that's exactly where it sounds like on this email that that was, so I guess maybe we have to, trail cams. I'm kidding, 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 kidding.
Something that somebody brought up to me, because they were talking about in their, in their apartment complex, people would pick it up, but then as soon as they went outside of their area, they would throw it in somebody's yard. And they were talking about something called, not just the, doing like a citizen watch or a turn-in, like, you know, if you can take a picture of somebody doing that as a citizen, you know, and you could get 50 bucks for it, or 20 bucks, and start making people help patrol it. Because our police aren't going to have the time to do it, we don't have those resources. But, you know, that trail that goes behind like Centennial Park, there's a lot of homes that back up to that. If they see somebody doing that on their yard, they can take a picture, and we can figure out who it is. I think we should give them a ticket.
Well, we see, like Dick said, we see a lot of dogs walking on our street. We have what we call the big block, Renton and Capital, and they're intersected by Nixon and Merck Avenue. And people walk that great big river with their dogs. And we have no problem. People walk with their piggly wiggly bags or whatever, and they pick up after their dog, and you see them carrying the stuff along, they take it home with them, and they put it in the garbage. We don't have any problem.
And we got that one lady, that one lady that walked four or five of them.
Yeah.
I used to take mine over to Rick's house and throw it.
Well, do you want to look into that, and what, I mean, is two months enough? A month?
A month is enough.
So let's postpone a month.
Yep. Well, wait, that's when the hearing is.
Okay, let's postpone it two months.
I want to be after that hearing.
Give it two months, and put it in May. It'll give enough time to, for you to gather that stuff up, is that...
What the doggy doo-doo box is without a hearing.
I'm sorry.
Don't, don't speed the year up too much, especially...
But we don't want to do it in March, on the 26th.
I hear you.
It'll be until midnight.
So that would be April.
Yes. I'm sorry that I said May.
Okay.
All right, so we do not need a vote on that, do we, Dave? We'll bring it back up then? Thank you. Okay. We have, next item is discussion and possible consideration of a cost-sharing proposal for the replacement and installation of benches in the downtown Business Improvement District.
So you all are welcome to come forward and talk, but otherwise, I can do it for you from here. The downtown Business Improvement District is asking the village to partner with them in replacing the benches that exist in the downtown, plus add two more. Basically, they've done some of the legwork there. They've shown this to the plan commission, who recommended approval of the particular style of bench that's proposed. The total price is probably with commemorative plaques or sponsor plaques, about $18,000. And they're asking basically the village to share that hard cost with them, plus they're asking the village to handle the installation piece. You want to add to that, Tom Brass, president of the bid? Who's sitting in the back of the room?
Well, I think we're here to ask for $9,200, which is, actually, we've decided to absorb the cost of the plaques ourselves.
Okay.
So we'll stick with the actual quote that was presented to you for the cost of the benches, which are variables between four footers and six footers. We will be going out to the community asking for memorial, don't, well, not, they'll have the ability for memorial sponsorship on each, on each bench, which is where the bid will try to recoup our expenses. And we're looking for shared revenue from the village of 750%, so we're looking for your approval tonight on $9,200. And I think Mike might have, you have some questions on the installation? Because we're asking the village to take care of the installation, and a couple cases, we have to pour some concrete for slabs, and they will take care of the, the removal of the current benches and addition of the new benches. So the downtown village area will have, everything's going to look the same. But I believe you might add some questions.
Tom, I have a question for you.
Yeah?
Are any of these benches something that could be refurbished, sandblasted, repainted or anything, or?
Yeah, we believe so. They're aluminum, they're anodized, so, is that the problem? Powder coated. And so if they get scratched, it could be sanded and powder coated. I mean, other than that, if they get fit, I guess you could pound them out, but I think they're going, they're going to hold up a lot better if you look at them. We've got such, I think I counted them, I think we've got four or five different variations of benches in the downtown village area. And the ones that are most visible, the ones on the bridges and over here in the downtown center, and that was a rubber-coated steel, which, you know, the rubber has deteriorated, causing the steel to rust. We won't have those issues with these benches, from what we've seen. And yeah, you're right, we can repaint them and, or we can send them out to someplace to be, what do we call it? Recoded, powder coated.
Are these powder coated, or, I'm talking about the new benches.
Yeah.
They are anodized, are they not?
No, actually, they're powder coated, I think is a technical term of them. It's the electrical process where the paint adheres to it.
I know, very hard to call it.
I thought they were anodized, so that...
Whatever you do, whatever you do, though, I think if somebody donates it, and if you replace them or got to move it or something, the person that bought it, that put it in there should be notified. Because I paid for one of the wooden ones way back, and I know so did another party in town, and all of a sudden, they replaced them, and they threw them out. And they weren't good enough downtown, but, you know, they could have used, I could have used the ones, seriously.
You know, we're looking at, some of those could be repurposed to other locations within the village.
Well, that's what I mean, you know.
You know, the ones that are there, we are looking mainly for a unified visual, you know, look for the Business Improvement District.
No, I can understand that, and I think it's a good idea, because it looks good. All I'm saying is, somebody donates it, and all of a sudden, you want to get rid of it. If the person that donated is still around, he should be able to pick it up, you know.
That is a great point. I didn't realize, so there's currently benches out there that have memorials on them?
Well, they did, they had one, they had one on each side, one by the bank, right by the, both sides of the street, by the bridge.
But currently, they're not there?
No, they're gone. That's what I'm just saying, if you're going to do that.
I got some color from Dick. And all, I, you know, I don't think we can guarantee they're going to keep having it, but I think maybe as a way out, we just put in there, you know, if this bench ever gets moved or has to be replaced, I don't know.
Maybe it's more, it only lasts as long as the bench does, and then you got to re-memorialize.
Well, all I, all I'm saying is, there were people upset with, and how many years ago was that?
I don't know.
10?
I don't know.
Well, that makes sense. I got a bench over at the splash pad with my name on it. Someday, that thing might be deteriorated, but...
It's coming up.
But I mean, all of a sudden, the board wants to change it, so it looks better, and it's a good bench, and they throw it out where...
You want to go to his house.
To be honest with you, I would think unless we have a major highway project or something, these benches are going to be here for at least the next 10 years. And if I'm going to buy a bench for $750, if it's there for 10 years, I'll be happy with that.
I just was going to bring it up because I know that.
I just wanted to ask two questions quick. Was there, was there, I'm just asking, was there a time that we had chose the anodized option and we switched to black? Did you guys switch to it, or was it always what was shown where it's the black powder coated color? I'm just wondering.
It's always been the black.
Okay. I thought it must be an anodized looking color, or, I don't know.
Is this, with all these benches, though, is that because of Riverwalk that we need, we have more people now downtown that everybody said we didn't need to, Riverwalk? Is it, I mean, are the benches needed because we have so many more people downtown?
Well, you know, we started out by looking at the ones that were deteriorating and looked like they needed replacement. Then we got into more of looking at additional locations. There have been a couple requests, say, over by Jensen Mortars, that one is going to be a new bench that wasn't there before, as you enter the park from the west and over to the one bridge, the one foot bridge.
But Jim, I just want, is it because there's, we have so many more people downtown now, and more people, is that?
No, I think the answer to the question is, the Business Improvement District Board said, and I've counted, and we've got four or five different variations of benches. We have flat wooden benches, we have composite benches, we have plastic coated benches. We got four or five different kinds. We said, you know what, we're willing to step forward, spend our property owners' money to get a uniform look, and that's what we're looking for, a uniform look to the downtown, the Business Improvement District, which is going to include the Riverwalk area and all that. And that's really what it comes down to, is we just, you go to other communities, you don't see four or five different benches all over. You see pretty much, here's what we've decided on, you see uniformity within that area. That's what we're looking for here.
I guess my question is really, is there, there's that much demand for people to, that walk around downtown to sit there?
We're only increasing benches by two, and they're in.
Right, but I mean, even the benches we have, I mean, are they used all the time?
So I think the benches get used around here.
They do. I see them when I walk through town.
Okay. That's, I was just curious.
So, and we're going, we're getting a 50% discount pretty much because of the cost sharing, not including the installation and stuff, but the bid's picking up half the cost, and the village is going to pick up the other half?
Well, the village will pick up the installation charges, if you don't.
Yeah, right. And Mike, give a guess, estimate on that. I mean, are you thinking, you know, 200 bucks a bench, or more, you know, 500?
It depends. When we have to pour the concrete base, it's going to be a lot more. So we'd want to work with the bid district on the location of the two new benches to make sure we are putting them in the proper spot. And then we'll have to look if there's any site restrictions. Public Works did contact the manufacturer about the mounting hardware, and it seems pretty straightforward for taking the old ones out and then putting the new one in. So we'll be able to do that. I'd probably like to have them work on a few before I give you a direct estimate on how much it's going to cost.
Yeah, and I was just, I mean, like in my head, I'm just ballparking it at 400 to 500, but you're right, maybe it's more around 800 or 900, or more, if they're pouring concrete, so.
Right. And I think the question was asked if we have money in the budget. Well, I mean, we'll, we'll utilize the currently budgeted funds. If we need additional funds, you know, we'll work with the administrator.
I'm just asking where it's, which account it comes from.
We have a general account in Public Works that we, our street maintenance.
You just switched it around.
Let the holes get deeper.
So we'll be happy to work with the bid district on this project and the new locations.
It's more than a thousand bucks. I just think that's a sizable amount.
I'll make a motion to accept their proposal. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the proposal for cost sharing, and for the village board to approve the installation cost and the $9,200 towards the benches. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve participation in a League of Wisconsin Municipalities program to review Heartland's obligations and options related to closed captioning requirements.
So this is a little bit of a, kind of an out of left field hard turn for y'all, but, so under federal law, there, there are requirements for, certainly for large, for the large television stations and, and for large cable operators and those sorts of things, for closed captioning. Some of the recent regulations and some of the recent interpretations have, if you will, moved that obligation down, and our obligations under the Americans with Disabilities Act and a variety of other federal pieces of legislation have moved that down to the municipal level. And so not only is it a, is it potentially required of us under the law, because not only does the village broadcast its board meetings live and in tape rebroadcast on the cable channels, it also streams it live on YouTube, and archives it and rebroadcast it on YouTube on demand. The league, recognizing that this is an oddity for most municipalities in the state, and that most of us don't have the resources to look into this on our own, worked with a, in a law firm that specializes in this sort of activity, to create basically a group rate. And they're looking to see if there are municipalities in the state that are interested in, for a flat fee of $1,000, being part of this group and, and ending up with, at the end, an individual report, in this case, for the Village of Heartland, that describes how the regulation would impact us and what our options might be. It's purely optional. At some point, however, we will have to look into it and make sure that we're covered.
There's no, is that belong, like Arrowheads on our television? Would they have to, ask them to pay 1,000, too, or do they come under ours?
No, that would be a different entity. They would have different obligations as well, but they could certainly be informed, so to speak, by what is learned here with the village.
No, that's all I wanted.
Arrowheads on ours?
Oh, yeah. I mean, our, our channel station has, that's where you pick Arrowheads, who they had some of their support.
Oh, okay, it's not very often.
And this is just to find out what we can do or what's, we know it's needed, correct?
Well, we think we do. There are some nuances that I don't really know much about, but based on what I've learned to this point, there are some nuances. And, and the nuances are really that I suspect they have to do with the difficulty that we would experience, and probably the cost that we would experience in making it happen. It's one of those things, as many, as many accommodations are, that if it's an overwhelming cost, I don't know what that number is, it's not something you have to do. Certainly, there could be a policy decision that regardless of the cost, we're going to do it, but the fact is that we'll have to look at it and see what it can be.
So for this, we would pay $1,000, and that would make us part of the program.
And an outside group would come in and figure out, you know, what we do today, what kind of broadcasting we do in terms of not only our live, but our rebroadcasts and the variety of things that, that Ben puts together for us. They would evaluate all of that against the law, that is, not against the law, but in comparison to the law, they would evaluate all of that and determine what obligations we would have under the law. And then the other side of that is how we can address the law, how we can address the need to prevent, present rather closed captioning, and what the costs associated with that might be. And then there's a balancing test to determine whether it's something that the village can and should do.
Would that improve our, our village channel?
You mean the, the technical aspects of it?
Well, what's, you know, what's on it, or?
No.
Probably would not have any change to the programming.
It just means you can read what's on there. No, you can, no, that's what it means. You can read as it's written.
Is it going to be an English?
It depends on what you choose.
Is, is this like, can you use like voice recognition software?
I have no idea. I have no idea how closed captioning is done. That would be part of what we would learn. Maybe our man behind the camera knows how closed captioning is done, but I don't know that it's something that we need to get into tonight. I think that's what we'll learn.
I have a friend who does that. And they, they sit in there, she does it from home. And she sits and she watches the TV, and she types in what's being said, as it's being said. And she's highly paid for that. And she does that for a lot of national things that are going on.
And then what do they do with that information?
It's, it's scroll across the screen. It's, you're reading what the people are saying.
Oh.
It's for people that cannot hear.
For hearing impaired.
That's what it's, for hearing impaired.
Or sometimes it's for.
Or like when our TV channel doesn't give decent sound. If you can't hear it on the sound, you can read it.
Oh, I see.
We use it all the time.
So do you guys want to be?
I do this quite often when I can't understand what they're saying. What did they really? Run it back, put on the closed captioning, and.
Sorry.
But I don't know that I'm thrilled about the idea of another expense for our 10 listeners.
Right. It's up to you guys.
We need to know what the laws are.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the $1,000 to join the Wisconsin Municipalities Program about the closed captioning.
It's been moved and seconded and any other discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Thank you.
That motion is carried. Next, I, we have announcements. There's a lot going on. So the, there will be an election in Heartland on April 3rd. People can vote at the village hall. That's for the, the state and the village. There was quite a few area teams, high school teams, that made it to state, which was kind of cool to see. I mean, quite a bit. And that was neat, so congratulate those kids if you see them on any of those teams. I don't know every single team that made it, so I don't want to pick one out, but a lot of area schools were involved with that. And the weather's getting nicer. I saw quite a few geese going north.
Remind the public of the, we'll remind the public again of the open house for Chief Bagan on his retirement from the department Wednesday night, the 28th, at Heartland North, at 4:30 in the afternoon.
Yeah.
4:30 till they kick us out, I suppose. So everyone's invited to that, to share a moment with the chief and tell him thanks.
Absolutely. And that is very important, so we hope that that gets packed in. Does anybody else have any other announcements? I may be out of bounds here. I'm going to, I'm going to ask a question, and it is on the agenda. I'm going to ask, that it may, due to the hour, and due to the fact that there's cake, and due to the fact that it's a happy day, it's a happy and a sad day, it's bittersweet, with Chief Bagan's retirement, I am throwing out there to the board and asking the administrator to make sure it's legal that I do so, to postpone the last item on our agenda, which was to take care of business, but, of business, but are we able to do that?
Absolutely. You don't have, ever have to go into closed session if you don't want to.
Just making sure, nor take up the business.
Yeah, the motion would simply be a motion to adjourn.
Okay, so even though it's on the agenda, it's, okay.
I'd rather have cake, you know.
I know. You're the only reason that I'm doing this. I know, I'm watching the clock. I'm like, Dick's, it's going to get past 8:30, and he's going to be upset, so go ahead and make your motion.
I'd like to make the motion, we adjourn. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.